The September 20th, 2021, public hearing for the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners on the fiscal year 2021-22 budget. We'll start with Agenda Item 1A, Roll Call. Will Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Bernard. Mayor Kerner.
Here. Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Present.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Very good. We do have a quorum with six county commissioners present in the chambers. We do have one county commissioner by telephone, so after the prayer and pledge of allegiance, we'll take up any motions that are required to allow Commissioner Bernard to participate fully. I'll turn it now over to Commissioner Weiss for the prayer and pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
We ask you to bless this meeting of people who earnestly desire to do the work in the best possible way, to benefit those we serve, and to leave our children a better world. Please give us the wisdom and vision to plan adequately and act correctly to achieve these ends. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. You're recognized for a motion.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to allow Commissioner McNamara to participate virtually for our meeting this evening.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Weiss, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth, under the board rules and exigent circumstances that do exist to allow Commissioner Bernard to vote and participate fully in our agenda and proceedings here today. No further comments by members of the board, all in favor, all opposed. That motion passes six to zero. From this point forward, Commissioner Bernard will be able to participate fully in discussion and voting.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Are there any amendments to the agenda? We have a motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth to adopt the agenda as published, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. No further comment by members of the board, all in favor, all opposed. That passes seven to zero.
Motion to receive and file proof of publication.
It's a motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth to receive and file the proof of publication, which has been lawfully published, and proof is contained within the agenda. It's been seconded by Commissioner Weiss. No further comments by members of the board, all in favor, all opposed. That item passes seven to zero. Under TRIM, we are first required to read into the record the percentage increase in millage over the rollback rate and specific purposes for ad valorem tax increases. I'll recognize the county administrator at this time.
Vice Mayor, members of the board, on page three, in accordance with the truth and millage TRIM bill, the Board of County Commissioners shall hold hearings on the tentative budget and proposed millage rates. As stipulated in the TRIM bill, the first substantive issue to be discussed shall be the percentage increase in the millage over the rollback rate necessary to fund the budget, if any, and the specific purpose for which ad valorem tax revenues are being increased. Page four, Palm Beach County, countywide proposed millage rate of 4.7815 is 4.13% over the rollback rate of 4.5917.
We did lose your, Madam Administrator, we did lose your audio.
Mayor, on.
Please proceed, Ms. Baker.
Thank you. On page four again, Palm Beach County Library District proposed millage rate of 0.5491 is 4.25% over the rollback rate of 0.5267. Palm Beach County Fire Rescue MSTU proposed millage rate of 3.4581 is 4.60% over rollback rate of 3.3059. This requires a supermajority vote. Palm Beach County Jupiter Fire MSTU proposed millage rate of 1.7880 is 1.62% below the rollback rate of 1.8174. Palm Beach County Aggregate Co.'s millage rate of 6.5835 is 2.80% over the rollback rate of 6.4039. Palm Beach County Countywide so the debt millage rate is 0.0334. Palm Beach County Library Co.'s debt millage rate is 0.0333. And Vol. 522, a budget briefing regarding the increase of rollback revenue. Countywide share net tax increase was 33.14. Increase in other constitutional officers, including judicial and six-annual. Increase in business fee operations net revenue is 25.4 million. Decrease in non-parting operations is a negative 242,000. Increase in reserve, 14 million. Increase in major and other revenues, a negative 11 million. Increase in capital projects, 2 million. Increase in debt service, 2 million. Decrease in other funding sources, 18.2 million. Increase in beginning balance brought forward, a negative 33.9 million. Additional taxes from new construction at rollback rate, CRA rollback adjustment, and tax loss from revaluations by the value adjustment board, 14.2 million, for a total increase in countywide fund of 42,157,148 dollars. County Library, increase in library operations net revenues, 4 million. Decrease in reserves, a negative 1.3 billion. Increase in transfer to library improvement expansion fund, 400,000. Decrease in the beginning balance brought forward, 257,000 dollars. Additional taxes from new construction at rollback rate and tax loss from revaluations of the value adjustment board, 707,1000 negative. Total county library increase, 2,638,432 dollars. Fire Rescue MSTU, increase in Fire Rescue Operations net revenues, 19.0 million. Increase for transfer to capital projects fund, 1.7 million. Reserve increase in reserves, 4.6 million. Increase in beginning balance brought forward, a negative 8 million. Additional taxes from new construction at rollback rate, CRA rollback adjustment, and tax loss from revaluations by the value adjustment board, a negative 4.3 million. Total increase for Fire Rescue MSTU, 13,786,290 dollars. Jupiter Fire MSTU, decrease in Fire Rescue Operations net revenues, 224,000. Additional taxes from new construction at rollback rate and tax loss from revaluation by the value adjustment board, 143,000. Total fund increase of 367,325 dollars. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board, if you have any comments or questions at this point.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
If not, Mayor, I turn it back to you.
Very good. We'll take now questions or comments from members of the board. Having no inquiries or comments, the next order of business is to accept public comment on the countywide funds, budget, and dependent district budgets. We'll start with Sheila Shigus of Gulfstream Goodwill. Ma'am, if you could approach this microphone here to my right, you'll have three minutes. We're delighted to have you here today, and thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. My name is Sheila Shigus. I am the new Division Director over Homeless Shelter Services in West Palm Beach County, Operator Gulfstream Goodwill. I'm pleased to be here today representing our organization and all those that we serve with as provider partners to say thank you for your care and your diligence in providing budget and support to end homelessness in our community. I have been in this community now for three months, and I have seen wonderful strides in the area of ending homelessness, and we will continue to that end. But wanted to thank you all for helping hundreds of people who have had change in circumstance, who have had life experiences that have ended and left them at our care. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I had the pleasure to meet with Sheila and our superstar Deputy Jim Mackey from Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, who's involved in the hot team and works hand-in-hand with Sheila Goodwill and all of our stakeholders and participants in ending homelessness in Palm Beach County. So, thank you for your time here today, Sheila, and thank you for your service to this county. We'll now have Carmen Weinberg. Thank you, Ms. Weinberg, for being here today. You have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I am Carmen Weinberg, the founder of Animal Friends Project. It's a small, all-volunteer nonprofit in Delray Beach, helping the low-income communities of Palm Beach County. At first glance, it looks like Palm Beach County has made advances in the welfare of the animals that live in the county. But the truth is that whatever has been done up to this point is not enough. There are hundreds of thousands of free-roaming cats in the streets that need help. There are not enough spay and neuter surgeries to prevent the birth of thousands of kittens every year. There's many cats giving birth right at this moment. These kittens are born only, they are born to live short lives full of misery and hunger. The homeless cats that do survive to adulthood get sick and die suffering while the county and the residents watch and do nothing to help them. The residents that care for the free-roaming cats need help, too. They are usually the neatest and poorest in the county. The goal of the Countdown to Zero initiative is to end euthanasia of adoptable animals at Palm Beach County Animal Care and Control. All efforts are being put towards reducing intake, and they are overtaxing local rescues that pull cats from the shelter or returning the streets, the cats to the streets that they receive so they have to be cared for, or, I'm sorry, so they, they are returning the cats to the streets so they do not have to be cared, or they don't have to die at the shelter. It doesn't matter if the cats are adoptable, feral, or sick. They are returned to the streets as part of the return-to-field program, and then they are expected, the community, to feed and care for these cats. There is no community outreach at the moment, no support for the residents that are expected to care for these homeless cats, and ACC does not have a food bank for community cats. Peggy Adams has a food bank, but only for own animals because the intent is to keep the animals with the owners so they don't come into shelters. And many residents go without basic necessities so they can buy food for all the hungry cats they see in their communities. The county knows where these cats are, and the solution to it is to fund more spay and neuter. If you go to any low-community area, you will find cats giving birth, cats infested with fleas, lice, mites, cats that have been shot with big guns, cats trying to find food in the garbage, cats dying on their cars. That's what I do. I go to these communities, and I find these cats and try to find help for them. The county knows that it's less expensive to spay one cat than to care for that cat and the kittens that it will produce at the shelter. So, the county knows that spaying and neutering saves money. The county needs to provide more spay and neuter locations for the residents to attend. Many residents do not have transportation, do not have means to rent a trap to bring the cats there. And mobile spay clinics, they do work. There's some in the entire county, and they do work. Please fund more spay and neuter surgeries to end the suffering. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Weinberg. We'll go now to Penny Pear. Thank you for being here today. You have three minutes.
Thank you for having us. I'm just basically just backing up what she said. I've been a trapper for 10 years. I'm on the street. I mean, I do handiwork for a living and trap at night when I'm avail, you know, two days a week. But we really do need more facilities. Peggy Adams tries to do the best they can, ACC as well. If we could get other people that could be helping us, like vets and whatever, and get more funding to help draw them in, that would be wonderful. We definitely need more resources for that. And I represent truly all cats trapping and rescue, and as a trapper, we exorbe a lot of cost ourselves. You don't even, you don't even want to know, you know? And I made $30,000 last year, and I think I spent 10 on the cats. But anyway, there's an overwhelming amount of feral pregnant cats, and so the TNVR is really important to get things under control. And I'd really like to see West Palm Beach be an example to other counties to show how important and how you can make a difference in taking care of these cats and their lives. And that's pretty much, that's it. And I appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you. We appreciate your comments. I don't see any questions from members of the board, and that does conclude comments by the public in person. I do have three public comment forms from Azandri Ramaker, Linda Bardis, and Debbie Lewis. These comments have been distributed to members of the board and pertain to the TNVR. And so, if you haven't had a chance to see them, we'll make sure you have, and I'll receive and file this without objection and turn over to the clerk. That will conclude public comments in total. We'll return now to the board for discussion on the countywide funds and proposed countywide millage rate. Madam Administrator, you're recognized.
The proposed Palm Beach County countywide millage rate of 4.7815, which is 4.13% over rollback rate of 4.5917, the Palm Beach County countywide debt service millage rate is 0.0334.
Very good. Commissioner Weiss, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt millage resolution for the countywide millage.
Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Weiss.
Second.
It was seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth on a motion relating to the county, Palm Beach County countywide millage rate. Are there any comments or questions from members of the board? All in favor? All opposed? That item, that motion passes seven to zero.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a budget resolution for countywide funds in the amount of $5,141,889,479.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Weiss to adopt a budget resolution for countywide funds, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. No further comments by members of the board, all in favor? All opposed? That motion passes seven to zero.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sheriff's gross budget of $788,630,950.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Weiss relating to approval of the sheriff's gross budget, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. No further comments by members of the board, all in favor? All opposed? That item, that motion passes seven to zero. We're delighted to have our sheriff here with us today. Thank you, Sheriff Bradshaw, to you and your deputies and workers in the civilian realm that protect us every day. We appreciate your service, sir. We'll return now to the board for discussion on the library district. Are there comments by members of the board? Madam Administrator, you're recognized.
The proposed Palm Beach County Library District millage rate of 0.5491, which is 4.25% over rollback rate of 0.5267, Palm Beach County Library District debt service millage rate is 0.0333. Here.
Very good. I don't see any comments or questions by members of the board. Vice Mayor Weinroth, you're recognized for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I am pleased to make a motion to adopt the millage resolution for the library district, found more fully on page 20.
Very good. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth relating to the adoption of the millage resolution for the library district, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. There's no further comments by members of the board, all in favor? All opposed? That motion passes seven to zero. Vice Mayor Weinroth, you're recognized for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to adopt the budget resolution for the library district in the amount of More particularly described at page 21.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth relating to the adoption of the budget resolution for the library district, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. There's no further comments by members of the board, all in favor? All opposed? That motion passes seven to zero. We'll return now to the board for discussion on the Municipal Services Taxing District, MSD. Are there comments by members of the board? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt the motion, budget resolution for a Municipal Services Taxing District, excuse me, in the amount of $54,230,79. More particularly described at page 23.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth to adopt the budget resolution for the Municipal Services Taxing District, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. There's no further comments by members of the board, all in favor? All opposed? That motion passes seven to zero. We'll return now to the board for discussion on the Fire Rescue MSTU. Madam Administrator, you're recognized.
The proposed Palm Beach County Fire Rescue MSTU millage rate of 3.4581, which is 4.60% over rollback rate of 3.3059. This requires a supermajority vote.
Very good. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized for a motion.
Let's see. I'll try to do this, but my staff gave me the wrong agenda. So, a motion to adopt Palm Beach County Fire Rescue MSTU adopting millage rate of 3.4581, which is 4.6% over the rollback rate of 3.3059.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner McKinley to adopt a millage rate for Fire Rescue MSTU, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. There's no further comments by members of the board, all in favor? All opposed? That motion passes seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead and make a motion to adopt the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue MSTU budget of $607,103,899.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion.
What was that? $899, is that what you said? Okay. I just want to make sure.
Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner McKinley to adopt the budget resolution for the Fire Rescue MSTU. It's been seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. There's no further comments by members of the board, all in favor? All opposed? That motion passes seven to zero. We'll return now to the board for discussion on the Jupiter Fire Rescue MSTU. Madam Administrator, you're recognized.
Mayor, the proposed Palm Beach County Jupiter Fire MSTU millage rate of 1.7880, which is 1.62% over the rollback rate of 1.8174. Here.
Very good. I don't see any inquiries or comments by members of the board at this time. We'll recognize Commissioner Moreno for a motion.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to adopt the millage resolution Jupiter Fire MSTU, more spelled out on page 27.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Moreno, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth to adopt a millage resolution for the Jupiter Fire MSTU. I don't see other comments or questions by members of the board, all in favor? All opposed? That motion passes seven to zero. You're recognized for additional motion.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt budget resolution for the Jupiter Fire MSTU in the amount of $21,463,216, as better described on page 28.
Second.
We have a motion made by Commissioner Moreno to adopt a budget resolution for the Jupiter Fire MSTU. It's been seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. I don't see any further comments by members of the board at this time, all in favor? All opposed? That motion passes seven to zero. Return to the board for discussion on the MSTU Unincorporated Improvement Fund. I don't see any comments by members of the board, so I'll recognize Commissioner Sacks for a motion.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I move to adopt budget resolution for the MSTU Unincorporated Improvement Fund in the amount of $13,810,248.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Sacks to adopt a budget resolution for the MSTU Unincorporated Improvement Fund, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. No further comments by members of the board, all in favor? All opposed? That item passes, that motion passes seven to zero. We'll move now to the adoption of the aggregate millage rate. Madam Administrator, you are recognized.
The proposed Palm Beach County aggregate millage rate of 6.5835, which is 2.80% over the rollback rate of 6.4039. Mayor.
Very good. I don't see any other, any comments or questions by members of the board. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized for a motion.
Mayor, I don't have a date or a window.
I wanted to take a shot. We'll go with, we'll go with Vice Mayor Weinroth, and then you'll second it, I presume.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll make a motion to adopt the aggregate millage resolution, more particularly described at page 30.
We do have a motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth to adopt the aggregate millage resolution, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. I don't see any further discussion by members of the board, all in favor? All opposed? That motion passes seven to zero. We'll move now to comments by members of the board, and we'll start with Commissioner McKinley to my right.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to welcome our clerk of court and our comptroller, Joseph Bruzer, for being up here today with us. It's nice to see you, Joey. And also, I want to thank Sheriff Bradshaw and his right-hand budgetperson, George Foreman, for being with us this evening, and thanks staff for all of the good work that they've done. It's been a heck of a year, a very challenging one. This budget should be an encouraging sign to the community after the economic hit that we took last year, that things are back on the right track. And I'm very proud of this board for, once again, my entire time on this county commission, we have fully funded our first responders. So, it's an honor to be able to support our fire rescue personnel and our law enforcement personnel in this budget. Despite what you may hear coming out of Tallahassee, this county has always been supportive of its first responders and law enforcement community, and they have done a stellar job responding to all of the challenges of the last year. So, Sheriff Bradshaw, thank you to the men and women of your department, and Chief Durin and your team. Thank you for everything that you've done to keep us safe this last year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Very well said. Commissioner Moreno, you recognizing comments?
Thank you. Just briefly, I'd like to say a shout-out to staff for, if you look at the paper, you will notice a lot of the municipalities have noticed that they are going to be raising their taxes. So, just being able to hold steady where we are and not raise the millage rate, thank you very much. You know me, I was the one that said I don't want to see our taxes go up. I wanted to see reserves used if we were in a crisis because that's what reserves are for, but in this instance, I think we've done just the right thing, and we actually had reserves from the federal government. That's what we're using now. So, I do want to say thank you to staff, and also, I do appreciate the fact that our millage rate has been held steady. Thank you.
Very good comments. Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. Commissioner Bernard, you recognize certain comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry that I cannot join the board today. I was up here by WebEx. I want to thank the residents of Palm Beach County for being patient with us regards to passing a budget that, as we always do, which is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our residents in Palm Beach County. I want to thank our county administrator, Verdinia Baker. I want to thank Todd Von Lammert, who is in charge while she's away. I want to thank all of the staff, all of the county workers of Palm Beach County, and specifically, I want to thank the OFMB staff, Sherri Brown, Lisa Master, also, further known as Lisa Pontius, and also, Robin Hawkins, and the whole entire staff at OFMB for working so hard in terms of passing a budget for the residents of Palm Beach County. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard, for your comments. Commissioner Weiss, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and thank, thank our office of OFMB. Thank you, Sherri. Thank you, Lisa. I mean, you guys have always come in with your work well-done and much appreciated. And thanks to all our department heads for doing their part on putting together a budget that we could balance this year. We heard from a number of folks throughout our hearing process regarding TNVR for community cats, and I'm hoping we, I know we have a new director over at ACC, so I'm going to ask staff to maybe reach out to that, that community and see about getting together and talking about what we can do and what they see as are the needs going forward and what the opportunities might be to help reduce the feral cat population in Palm Beach County. And with that, thank you very much, Mayor, and, and thank you all.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, one of the most important functions we can do as the county commission is to pass a budget, and this all comes from the top. So, thank you, Verdinia Baker, for leading the way in making sure that we have a workable budget for the benefit of all the people of Palm Beach County. As I said before, I feel very safe having our sheriff here and all of his deputies, who have always been have always been very, very effective in keeping us safe here in Palm Beach County, as well as our clerk and comptroller, Joe Abruzzo to my right. Thank you for being here. This is a very important time, also for EMS officers, it's been an extraordinary year. And I think that we have passed a budget that meets the needs of all the people and of course, thanks to all the staff. You really are the wind behind our wings and we appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor, for that opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Vice Mayor Weinroth, you recognize, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. And as has been said before me, we look good up here because of the staff that's down there. We thank you very much for everything you've done. To our county administrator, I know you can't be here today, but we certainly know that you've made quite a Herculean effort to bring this budget to us. We sent it back the first time. You brought it to us with some comments and you, you certainly sharpened your pencil and brought back a budget that made it very simple for us to give our unanimous approval. So, we thank you very much for everything that was done to bring this budget forward and to fully fund our police and our fire. Thank you.
Very well said, Vice Mayor. Thank you. And we are delighted to have our clerk of the circuit court and comptroller joining us on the day today in his constitutional position as such. He runs a heck of an office and the morale and efficiency is, is off the charts as it should be under his leadership. We'd be delighted, sir, if you'd have any comments for the public or members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. I have such a greater appreciation for what you all do and the time you put in and what the staff puts in, the budget that protects the citizens, that keeps our county running the way it is, which I would submit is the best in the nation. It, it has not been lost on me, but serving in this position, I have seen things that I probably wouldn't have and I know what you all do and I just have to commend you and thank you for welcoming me here. I know I will be back to give you an address about, of course, our finances and how we are operating in our agency and in our, in our office and I look forward to that, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, commissioners. Truly appreciate it.
Very good. And the clerk of the circuit court and comptroller has some very broad constitutional duties, not, not just running the court system, which obviously has been a very difficult challenge in, in the time of COVID-19 and making access to courts and vindicating people's constitutional rights to be before a judge and to have defense counsel and the prosecutor's ability to prosecute criminals and have a fair trial. That all comes back to the clerk and comptroller in addition to your audit duties and in addition to your financial obligations to the board of county commissioners in overseeing and directing our investments and reserves and things of that nature. Do you have any further comments, Mr. Abruzzo?
No, I appreciate it, Mayor. We have over a thousand different statutory duties and, and I cannot wait to come and address you all again, hopefully soon.
On all eight thousand of them?
I'm sorry.
On all eight thousand of them?
No, a thousand, one thousand, one thousand. So, I figured if you could, our minutes, since I am the clerk of the board of the county commissioner, I'll make sure we have about four to five days set aside for that, for that address. We'll be riveting, I assure you.
Well, we are excited to have you here to make further comments on your duties and roles and we thank you for being here today. We'll go now to the county administrator.
I'd just like to thank the board for your support and definitely thank staff. It was a tight budget year and all of our shoes were a little tight as we started to cut, but next year, I, we're going to be challenged, so we want the board to know that next year we'll be challenged, but we'll get it done. So, I want to thank staff for their support as well.
Very well said. Thank you, Madam Administrator, and as you are very well aware at this point, how delighted and privileged we are to have you as our county administrator. And to any professional staff up here before the board, Assistant County Administrator Bonlaren, Budget Office, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Great meeting.
Well said. All right. And so, I skipped myself, as I oftentimes do. I just wanted to thank the taxpayers of Palm Beach County that elect us to office and allow us to preside over what is now over six billion dollar budget and it allows us to fully fund many important departments and roles that we have and primarily our sheriff's office and our fire rescue service and we appreciate the sheriffs working with us in this tight budget year and all of our constitutional officers, which are broad in nature and scope. So, it is an honor to preside over this budget and thank you to my colleagues on the board. And I think just in, one reflection that I have is that it is a very large budget with many stakeholders that work year in and year out to help craft the budget, but I think the type of public comment and the minimal amount of public comment is a reflection of the end product and I think that speaks volumes of, of the professional work that goes into this, as you bring it before the board in various iterations, how smoothly this process goes. So, we thank you and we're in your debt. With that said, I don't see any further comments from members of the board, so the board of county commissioners is adjourned. Thank you.